Can you hear us now? And welcome, Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen Barnes is also on here.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll start with the warrant articles. Our payroll, we'll start with accounts payable. I'd like to make a motion that we accept accounts payable number 115 for $337,356.45. Do I have a second?
Again.
And that is surprisingly for paving, and that's a paving down on Westville Road. And we paid that on the last, last year's bill. I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number four for $10,509.45. Do I have a second? All in favor? And thirdly, I'd like to move that we accept payroll number five for $2,068.46. Do I have a second? That we accept the minutes of. Go ahead, a second. All in favor? And I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes for July 7, 2025. Do I have a second?
I can.
We've too much paperwork today. All right, next on our list is to open. Tree removal. They went out a couple of weeks ago in April. We have two bids. The first bid is, we will not make a decision about this. We've just announced them. This is from Bear Jerron Tree Service. Oh, I met him the other day. The total for 15 trees, full removal, 14 white pine and one birch for $9,600. Looks like he charges $673 per tree. Wonder if the birch is also the same. Birch, $192 for that one. The RFP was threatened that they would have that responsibility as well. The second bid. He did duplicates, obviously. Yeah, and actually.
Color copy here.
So it looks like actually we only have one bid today. So we can either make a decision on that today. You know, you're, you're the.
I don't think we're gonna get, we're not gonna get any better bids. And you spoke with him and I spoke with him. I was impressed with him. He called me, or I called him, or she called me, or somehow.
Yeah, I gave your number. I was at, we were at the ferry landing doing our duty. And he came over and asked if anybody could help and. That was in there. That looks like that was it.
We talked about it, though. He, that was part of our discussion. And he's like, oh yeah, he says that's standard fare. It's not a big deal. It's not hard to do.
And full removal means. So. Definitely in the RFP, yep. Do we want to accept his bid? Or do you want to have further conversation?
Well, maybe we can say we want to work with him and then decide actually how many trees we want. At another time.
Kind of inclined to move forward because then that's going to let us move forward more quickly with the history group.
The next, the next phase.
Okay, and like things are actually start moving and we've got electrical now to the septic system and we have water to the house. So it'd be nice to see it.
Would you like to move that we accept this bid?
I would like to move that we accept the bid and move forward.
Nice. So I took the, when I copied in your folder, and I'm gonna give this one to you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, in fact, he's got his little.
Do we need to work with Gary then to get the approval for the reforestation plan? Should we just ask him that right now? Gary? Gary, what's the process for us to move forward with the tree removal in terms of reforestation plan and your approval? Okay. It was actually in the RFP that they will do that, that they will.
I understand that.
Okay.
And that comes to you. Okay. And now that we just talked about whether he actually takes down all 15 or not, that plan will change depending on the number of trees he actually takes down. The 15 tag, but it may be that we don't need to take all 15. Definitely that one birch, which is right over. It's like the limb is intentionally growing on top of the, top of the shed, so. Taken care of. All right, citizens issues.
Got to be kidding me. I'm here on behalf of the cemetery committee. And wanting to know. Want to know when they plan on. If we're cutting the grass on the cemeteries that can be seen and working on the one at Snake Hill, which is a nest. Snake Hill. Snake Hill. I think that's what they call it. I used to call it Moche Hill. That's what I said. And anybody else call it Yarong Hill. Okay, thank you. Moche Hill. I'll take that back. I'm sorry. The one in that. The other one across what used to be Brown's House. I think it still is. And I'm only on the side of it. And there's no need of it. There really isn't any need of it. And then there's nine people on that committee. I mean, how hard is it to go up there? Even Bill has gone up there. But, and the other one, that one on Moche Hill, it's very bad. The tree fell down there. It took me three months of dealing with them. To get them to cut the tree up. They told me they had to have a big machinery come in. I didn't understand. And that's, and unfortunately, we're gonna do something. That's right. And you know, when the cemetery committee of the three gentlemen that were doing it. They had the owners right there is people that live close that said they would take care of it for them. And they would periodically go back. And I know they could work something out if they just take the time to, you know, do something about it.
One of the things that we are doing as a, as a board is looking at all the committees and our goal this year. In fact, the history committee just got a note today as well. But we are looking at every one of the committees and we are gonna be there to actually do a initial meeting because every, every year be a chair. So we can be sent to everyone over again, but it, we are going to be meeting with. Next Thursday, I believe it is. All of the members to, to come. We'll have a discussion. We'll have a discussion about what their requirements are. We'll definitely, since you brought this to our attention, share that information with them as well, not, not from Shetter, but.
Being seen from the world. They, these are people that, you know, settle this item like that. And it's really important that we keep them up here. Seventy-one are doing cemeteries on the island. I've been to every one of them. And some of them, you know, I realized they're way back in the woods. Very difficult to get back in there and really do some work in there.
Even though, whether they can take care of or not, but.
Well, if they're putting the flag down, they know. All they have to do is make a notation of they're going to each cemetery to put the flags on Memorial Day the week before. But they're not gonna let it down. Because the comments that were made was they need two years to evaluate. I don't know what they're evaluating, but it seems that. It really does. It's very much for nine. They, they put them out usually the week before Memorial Day, right around there. Sometime, I'm not exactly sure. They said, I didn't see.
To make sure that all the committees are working well together.
And the thing is that maybe this chairman, if we're dealing with this, we don't have a meeting for this person. It's still a, because.
They need some support.
The master of mass. And don't want them.
Hopefully Jill will, will be able to, you know, lend support where we can, but we, we need to, you know, the committees have a key role to play and. You know, I, I met somebody at the meet and greet and he said he had joined the cemetery committee. And he said, I think I'm on the cemetery committee. I'm not sure. Because we've never had a meeting and that sort of felt uncomfortable because here I am advocating for people to come join a committee. And then if the committee never meets or there, there is work to be done.
You know, maybe live close by, all one of them and alternate it on a weekly basis. It's not a big deal. I mean, you know, you're not asking them to go to every cemetery. The ones that can be seen should be really careful.
Right. And I know Alex lives very, right next to the one.
Thirty years without some other people getting them to the point right now, almost getting stones back together. Why, why they got stones, getting rid of the other brush. He ran the screen. I was down and going across John Williams, holding stumps out of the cemetery. Because they were.
Well, the nice thing is that, that already hasn't been funded because the people over here, so they donations ain't bigger than it. People didn't work out like ours. Get on their plate. But some bigger things, we needed stuff over there or something. You could always tie it up with last week.
They're taking care of this point. We, we hope for a good year. And doing it for years.
We were waiting to look at it, but it was three months before I could get to cut the tree. There's a couple of others in the local home to clear that when these guys were working on it. But the, the communication unfortunately has stopped because like, they used to go in and speak with the people around, discussing all the things, what we can, what we can do. And if there was anything that they could do, they had with them. And they would give them their phone number and name. So if they could call them, if there was a problem or, you know, a tree that was, like, we didn't always. I don't know. I think it's really a shame that the local.
Especially if you have nine people on a committee. Right. Any thoughts or comments?
No, look forward to the meeting.
Yeah, and, and, and if you want to join the committee, we're meeting next Thursday. I think I said four. Yep, thank you, Jill. Yeah, we'll have it here because it'll be a bigger group.
Paving's done. The stoner is done. As I told you earlier, we put a lot of gravel on the end of the main road just to make the transition a little better. I apologize about getting it before them. We get some, God, very long to fill it. I didn't get a whole lot of these people and get some great.
Well, I do want to say that Saturday, I was here and somebody came up to me who lives up at the northern part of the island, who, I don't, I don't know what he was doing down there. He said, I never get down to the, the lower end there of the island. And he said, I went down there and he said, what a great job on the roads. So he was very impressed. So I've heard nothing but positive comments. Yeah. That's right. Do you want to take bets on how soon somebody will be in here complaining about the speed on that road? People complain about the roads being bad and then you fix them and then they complain about the speeding. Yep. All right, any update on your committee? Okay, well, I'll give just a little bit of update because the, the horticulture subcommittee is just dying to take some of the plants that are there and bring them over here. And I think that's going to happen this coming week. For anybody that's been around here and been wondering what's happening, you've got plans for Wednesday, right?
Plans for Wednesday. I don't dare talk about anything anymore because everything just blows up and the weather's bad and this, and I'm just gonna wait until after we get it done. And then I'll say, hey, by the way, we did this. I nominate Donna. All in favor?
Question of the Board of Assessors Chair. Let's move on to that one.
Great, Lisa. Done. All in favor?
And some new appointments. And let me see if I can find those. Yeah, I know, I know. I've got these.
And then in front of them should be the reappointment.
Yep. All right, so I'm gonna start. And actually what I'll do is to save time for Charlotte and Mary Ellen is I'll just read these out. And if we get the approval, then we'll sign them all at the end so that we're not taking people's time. Read them off. Okay.
And then I thought maybe the new ones, you could do one of this. But that's what I have to.
These are the. Yep, to seven. Yeah, and then the others are new and, okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint the following people for, for, for their position. Jason Kates as EMA Director. Julie Casson as Deputy EMA Director. Joe Dickatan as Deputy EMA Director. Evan Goodkowski as E911 Addressing Officer. Jason Kates as Deputy E911 Addressing Officer. Jim Cromwell is Property Manager, Property Maintenance Committee Chair. And Kyle De Petrio as Tree Warden. Do I have a second? All in favor? All right, we'll sign those shortly. Stick those over here. And we have new appointments, which is really nice that we have new people coming on. I'd like to move that we appoint the following people in their respective positions. Tom Perry, oops, Tom Perry to the Board of Appeals. Tom Perry to the Conservation Commission. Shelley Dell to the Conservation Commission. And Emily Hunt for the.
Join that board, but you don't have an application for her yet. I'm not gonna get it in.
Okay, so we just had those three. Tom Perry to the Board of Appeals and the Conservation Commission. And actually, I talked to Tom at the meet and greet and his, his background is real estate law. Yeah, yeah, nice, nice fellow. And Shelley to the Conservation Commission. Do I have a second? All in favor? And we'll sign those shortly. Are these two or, and we're gonna wait for.
Yes, I separated Tom Perry.
Okay, yep, I see that. Okay, I'm just gonna put them all right here so we know to sign those. All right, next on our agenda is consideration of the draft revale contract. Do you want to talk about that?
And I think we had run it past them at one point and the only sticking point was the, we had in, for them to be bonded and also to hold back. I think it was a 20%. So basically he said, well, if you want to save $7,500, most cameras just hold back 10%. So we didn't ask for the bond, but we, after 15% to be held back.
So we have two copies here, so I'm thinking that we need to. So I'd like to move that we accept this contract and hold it on to Josh. All in favor?
Thank you, Lisa, for making it happen.
All right, next is. All right, next is, uh, our warrant record that, uh, needs to be approved and filed. Um. We have reviewed that, um, but it includes notes. Today's the fourteenth. Some minutes.
Technology, we think we have as much paperwork as we do.
Yeah, as I said, we, we have the warrant record, um, where, um, April added. The results of all the warrant articles and, um, in any meeting discussion and the three of us have looked at that and so.
Of the town meeting.
Of the town meeting, right. Um, so. Um, I'd like to move that we accept. The warrant record for, um.
Ten, we take the first.
Second.
Yes. Yes, you know, it's all over the place. You look at the little turn apart. Slide copy for the one. You know, it's not signed, but on the floor. It's good.
Next. We didn't move it to the end. Well, um. Yeah, well, the City of Atlanta Trust is working on a new project, they're, um, looking for another grant, um, that would impact, um. The causeways again. And so, um. They have asked if we would write a letter of support. And we have reviewed that letter and, um. Would love to be involved in help and hopefully, um. Get us a little money that would help with the, um, the causeways. So I'd like to make a motion that we, um. Send, accept and send this letter on to, to Kelp for their support.
Do I have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the last.
This isn't spiritual. People. I have to do something from, something from.
Gay Wagner and, um, she does the Clark book every year and. There's a picture, I don't know if you can see that, Charlotte, of. Um, what their record book looks like, she's been working in, on this for many years now.
The year range is, um.
Yeah, this one is nineteen twenty eight to nineteen thirty nine, so that's like eleven years worth of, um. Putting everything into one little book, I love it. Um, so, um. They will invoice this, this is work that she's been doing. And I'm trying to look for the price again. It's two thousand one hundred eighty three dollars and forty two cents and that was already approved in our, our budget. So I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we go ahead and sign this, um. This invoice and send it on to, um, co-file, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to sign it here. Different places to sign. This one, I think I only have to sign this one.
Yep.
Sign the bottom, yes. All right, and last, on our agenda, I think. Is a question that came up, um, it's just a, a, more of a question and actually it's great that you're here, um. Gary, there's a question, uh, about land splits and if there's a process for the town to review the splits before they happen. Uh, this is actually a question that came from our, um, tech collector. She said the only time that she's seen a split is when a deed comes through. And, and how do they, um. How do they show up or how do they work when there are buildings on the lot? If you have buildings on the lot and all of a sudden you decide to do a split. So let's say you have five acres and you decide, and you have three buildings. In one area.
And they decide to sell off. Or it's something. And I've got one acre. There, a lot of times, a lot of times people will call me before the, 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 the. Um, if they don't, they're doing, they're, they're going to. As, as far as I know, the first, the first notice that the farm that's used to be, um, is the transfer tax, people that become street. That's when they can have, when you officially become a. Whether, whether a farm can, you know, wire pre-authorization to do that. What's. Kind of, but, I don't know. Um, I don't even know if that makes sense, but, you know, somebody is. If, if, if there's non-conforming property with multiple structures on it. It can be split, but there's certain laws that have, uh, each of us, but. We have one area and each one has to be as conforming as possible to do that. To be, you know, it's on a way to the process, you couldn't really want, uh, five feet around the building. Um, the rest of the process, you have to be sort of divided, so that there are the rules that have to be.
So it can be, so somebody wants to split it and sell it. If they do and sell it and then all of a sudden they're left with this. This piece of property that only has, you know, barely five feet around it, how do you handle that?
Well, it depends on if it's allowable or not. It's allowable, yes, both of the principles, the matters could create the, um, maybe minimum loss that. If, whatever the difference comes in after that and. Um, I just, matter of fact, I'm just going to expect this today. Uh, hey, I'm currently told there's a similar type of situation with this. The way their rules, uh, the way their rules are written, uh. Lots of office, it's time to go, or the road are considered separate, separate parts. And what I asked, the record was created by the owner of the fossils on both sides of the road. And a certain date and acting, so I'm glad. So I'm looking at this, this building, I mean. It's to take. And running a studio, I want to walk, I can really, not pull up, like, stones. And I'm looking at a lot of this, because if you have, if you, and the conundite now is, one of the stuff is, if you get out of something, you're going and going. We had a principal structure again. So now you've got, you've got two different lot sizes, you've got two different frontage requirement issues. You've got the question of whether it's eleven acres or two and a half acres. Like, I have to sort of generate some more information. Forward coming, but if, if you get caught, probably.
So if, if it is split. The person doesn't come and tell the board, they just feel like, we hear how it's going where they use. But this split. Probably. Is that a violation?
Yeah, and you can, this, we always. You're a lot, it's pretty non. Yeah, so technically, there's no, there's no minimum. Somebody might be doing, uh, going by fifty, forty, so I'm. You just, you're, you're using, you can't do it.
Yeah, but like, there's, there's minimal nonsense for a fault.
Some residential, it's, right, or, yeah, so if I'm going to sell, if, if someone were to learn to have a fifty by a hundred foot wall. Then you're twenty feet on each side, so they can, they can't keep down, no. If you want, if you find a line that before you keep that. Also, you know, if there's a, you know, you know, the, the building in the, 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 the.
And we finished there or something, I said. You know, when it was. This, this is very helpful and it, it actually may be, uh, in contact with you again. So I had to say the specific issue, uh, we want, in general. Um, we, we don't want to call anybody, have a word with it, but just in general, what happens with. Splits. None of us are sure what, what happens with that and when you hear, um, I mean, I think that's a biggest concern, there's nothing to think about. Um, and not knowing how to split either.
Years ago, I scored a car walk, didn't lift them, but. But then I need to take. I think it was. An acre maybe and put it into. Fine line or anything, so. And that would have left the end. Uh, the way that I. And I was there on the plan, when it began, and we're bringing up. I was expecting, my.
Yeah. But it, I wonder, I have to look this word up, I'm not, you know, that. Yeah, and making that, doing all that special trouble and then having non-conforming property and. We've sold it before we even, you know, what if they split and sold it? So it's, now they're not able to, it hasn't, not a conforming asset for a. God, you know, it's not a real.
Well, they're doing what's big, they're checking those stuff. Well, like suddenly, you buy a big track of land, you sell a lot, then in two years, waiting for us to sell another one. Who checked over to make sure, say, we burned a stone wall, it has to five years. And usually it's done. Tied into this new track of land. They check that and say, you can't do, you can't take another lot, another three years, so I've been doing it.
Mm-hmm. But they check the building code, right? They have to really check.
The level code, and then, then you get in the whole, the, the, the building's there.
They check it, so they don't always get hurt. And do the test of the subdivision, I'm thinking that there are several subdivisions that say, you know, it's not, it's a lot.
And they're allowed to split them. And I've seen several splits where they split into two five acre lots.
There's only one.
Again, the end test is, uh, the part of over, yeah.
And, but who would check then if some, somebody takes that five acre lot then says, I want to now break into two lots? Yeah, who's watching that? Watching that, yeah. It would. That would, would be the hope, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, as I said, um, ask if she has further questions, I'm sure be in touch with you, but she brought that up because it came up as a conversation in, in one of our conversations the other day. And so we just wanted to, to bring it up publicly as trying to, trying to figure out what, what to do about it. And, and is there anything that we can do about it or how do you find out about it? So, um, any other sort of comment? No?
Absolutely. So, um, if there are any other questions, then I'm going to make a note of the week.
Second. All right.